Before we start, I really wanted to recognize that I know our staff have been working 24/7, at least on call. Everybody is, everybody is working as hard as they can and I absolutely appreciate what you've been doing, as well as the community folks who are out there helping each other, folks who are just staying home and helping keep everybody all safe. So, hang in there, everybody, we're going to get through this. And we'll start by getting through this meeting. And what we're going to do is, so this is our first meeting, it's a special meeting, we'll have another one, I think, next week, which is our regularly scheduled meeting. But we are going to have City Manager Lotter explain sort of what our format be and how we will work this for today.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we're all kind of learning habits and presses here under our current set of circumstances. So I appreciate everyone's patience, patience as we use the televideo conferencing method for conducting a public council meeting. First and foremost, just a couple of practice items. If you're currently not speaking, or you don't have the floor as recognized by the mayor, if you would, please always kind of keep your mic muted. That helps curb background and feedback issues throughout the meeting and will make it easier for each of you to be heard when you are speaking and for the rest of the group to benefit by your comments. All council comments or questions will be taken by roll through the mayor. And so, what you want to be aware of then is that as your name is called, you want to vote clearly, yea or nay, when those decisions come before you. Last week, we did have public comment that was received up until just sort of the end of the, close to the end of the business day, I guess we're starting, so we're not quite at the end of the business day, but just recently. And so, I know that you've, you've read the emails that you've gotten already, but there might be some messages that just you physically weren't able to read in time. And I think what we've decided to do is just include all of those comments as part of the public record, so that we can see honor all of those comments or words and opinions that the public has offered us through that medium. Let's see if there's anything else that I have left here. I think that's it right now, Madam Mayor. I think I ask you to take it from there.
Thank you very much. We are going to start with a roll call.
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah.
Councilmember Messner?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Bergel?
Here.
All right. So we are going to move right into our reports items. Our first action item is the consideration of 1A, the emergency declaration confirmation. And City Clerk Powell will have a report. May I have her report, please?
Mayor and Council, this resolution is the necessary step in order to confirm the proclamation of the resolution, resolution of emergency that City Manager Dean Lotter did on March 23rd. And in order to complete the process and forward this on to the state OES for any type of financial assistance and logistical supplies that is what this resolution does for us. I did want to, and I need to get to it. We had, by recommendation from county, yes, it was, we were advised to add one more furthermore to our resolution. So I did do that, and I'm going to read you that furthermore. And then I'll be looking for a, I'll be available for any questions. So furthermore, it is proclaimed and ordered that the city of Eureka requests any state and federal assistance may be available, including Stafford Act, public assistance, and individual assistance, and California Disaster Assistance Act, CDAA funding for federal major disaster number DR44. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
So the way I'm going to do this is I'm going to ask name by name if you have any questions, and then after we'll go back if you have follow-up, so that we're getting everybody in kind of order. So we'll start with Councilmember Castellano, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Let's see, um, I, I think I'm just wondering if there are any examples of some of the, a couple of different times in the emergency declaration, it mentions extraordinary powers by police or city staff, and if there are some examples of that, so that constituents might have a sense of, of what that might entail.
Let me do, let's see.
Did you come through?
Guys? Yes, so for the, for most of our resolutions, when it, for disaster declarations, the powers for the police chief would be an example for some type of, for those types of requirements he may have for the city manager, it's purchasing requirements, and then we would come back to council and report any emergency purchasing needs. It's pretty much outlined, a lot of it in the EMC in our Eureka Municipal Code. And I think Public Works Director Brian Gerving may have additional examples, but those are the ones that I've been made aware of.
No, I think what City Clerk Powell mentioned is, is accurate. It would basically be a null enforcement authority for the police in the event that it was necessary. You know, we're not at that point in this situation. And for the city manager, that additional purchasing authority, which would then come back to council later in the form of a report.
Thank you.
And, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because you froze up, that was your question, your only question?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And so next, Councilmember Messner, do you have any questions?
I don't really have questions about this one, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Arroyo?
I don't have any questions about this one, but I did want to clarify that I'm looking at a secondary screen, so I can see the agenda materials. So if I'm looking away, that's all that's going on.
I think we all have kind of agenda materials next to us, too, so thank you.
Yeah, just for the public who are watching, if they're like, what are they looking at?
That's good.
That may be what's going on, okay.
Councilmember Allison?
Hello? I had a question. So the emergency declaration, would that open up additional funding channels from the state?
Yes, Councilmember, it would. Any assistance that is being provided through the Office of Emergency Services, through the itself, that would be separate than the government funding that he's doing outside of the declaration. Those are usually by executive order, but this opens up the funding for the disaster funding declaration.
Okay, that's my only question.
Okay. All right. And Councilmember Bergel?
No questions on this item.
Now that everybody's asked a question, I just want to confirm that before we move on to public comment, you had all your questions answered, any of you have anything they just remembered? All right, then I will move on to public comment, and...
We did receive one comment in the public on this, and you were provided with that comment, and I, and it will be in the public record.
Thank you very much. Now, do we have any comments from the council? And I'll go back through the laundry list again, and we'll start with Councilmember Bergel, we'll go backwards this time. Any comments on this?
No, I'd make a motion, but I guess it'll go all the way through, so someone else can do that.
Oh, I didn't even think about that. Why don't you make a motion, and then maybe we'll get a second?
Okay, so I make a motion that we adopt a resolution at the city council, confirming existence of a local emergency in the city of Eureka due to COVID-19 pandemic with the change brought forward from county.
One second.
All right, so we have a motion, we have, I'll go through and see if there's any discussion. Councilmember Messner, do you have any discussion on that item?
Nope.
Councilmember Arroyo?
None.
Councilmember Castellano?
No.
All right, and then let's ask City Clerk to take a role for that.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Messner?
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Allison?
Aye.
Councilmember Bergel?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right, so we will move on to our next item then, which is to adopt a resolution of the city council confirming the existence of an emergency in the city of Eureka beginning on 23rd, 2020 during, due to the pandemic. So that's sort of the same thing, right? I'm sorry if I got confused. So that's item 1A, all incorporated in as well?
Yes, that's...
A second motion? Oh, that was just the recommendation. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, so now the second item this afternoon is the urgency ordinance, which is the enforcement of health oral orders. And Mayor, Public Works Director Gerving will provide a report.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This urgency ordinance was developed after staff started talking about some of the logistics surrounding enforcement of the shelter in place order, which, as was issued by the county health officer, but it is up to each jurisdiction to actually go out and enforce. And in many cases, the police department is doing that, and in the case of the county, the sheriff's offices. However, in Eureka, understanding that the police department is always strapped and stretched thin, we did have some capacity in code enforcement to assist with the effort. But in the event that there is not voluntary compliance, which is always the preferred outcome, staff believed it would be wise and necessary to have our code enforcement officers have misdemeanor citation authority for the enforcement of these orders from both the state and the county. So that's what's before you in the form of an urgency ordinance tonight. Those, those authorities would end with the ending of the emergency. Though staff does anticipate coming back at some point with a broader text amendment to the municipal code, which would give the same misdemeanor citation authority to our code enforcement staff for other violations of the municipal code, just as another tool in the toolbox, in addition to our other enforcement tools like administrative citations and things like that. So those are the basics. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them, and I'm sure that the city attorney would be able to answer some of them as well.
All right, so I'll open it up for questions, and we will start with Councilman Allison. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
All right, Councilmember Arroyo?
Yes, I, I guess my question is, is about the, I guess pertaining to this, there have already been a few folks who contacted us who felt that their business was told that they were not an essential business. And, so I, I'm not really seeing a lot of guidance about what constitutes an essential business. I don't know if I'm missing that, or whether that's just additional directives that have been issued elsewhere. Could you clarify how that's determined?
Sure. The county health officer's order is quite specific. It definitely gives a lot more guidance than the state's order does. Nevertheless, it does not outline specifically what types of businesses are not essential. It does discuss some of what would constitute an essential business, but not the other way around. So city staff, including Director Dumichel and his staff, developed a spreadsheet based on the zoning code and the definitions in the zoning code that outlines, here are the businesses broken down among, you know, hundreds of categories, which ones can operate and which ones can't. Now that being said, even once you find a business that seems to fall into a category of nonessential, there's still a lot of gray area, and there are many businesses that you might think are nonessential, but are providing an essential function in part of their operations, or they may support essential functions, doing work for the city of Eureka, or for the county of Humboldt, or for utility providers. So what we have done, rather than putting the, in code enforcement officers in the position of having to make those calls in the field with each business that they're visiting, they're understandably hesitant to do that, because it would put them in a position where they're setting a precedent for all the rest of the businesses in town. So what we've put in place this afternoon is a process where businesses will be directed to email, an email address that we've set up for this purpose and for communicating with the county. It's covid19@ci.eureka.ca.gov. And if they have reasons that they believe they are essential, they can state those, and also any practices instituted to protect their employees and their customers, and we can take that into consideration. And then Chief Watson and I, at times probably consulting with the city manager, can make a determination.
Great, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Messner?
Yeah, I just have a, I'm curious if there was an impetus to this? What was the, what was the, were there businesses that weren't complying that seemed to be creating problems within this? Like, not just the special services, but, or essential services, but, like, for instance, food is an essential service. So if people are serving food, no matter what that looks like, are they complying in regard to making sure things are cleaned, cleaned, and that people are staying six feet apart, and, and that sort of thing? And so I'm, I'm just curious, like, what the distinction is between essential services and compliance? Because there may be an essential service, but there may not be compliance, or it's considered an essential service, but maybe not by some. So how are you guys determining that? And was there some kind of impetus that really put this into place?
The impetus for this and enforcement of the order in general is just the understanding that in order for the order to achieve intended purpose and to be effective, people have to, have to comply with it. And we recognize that it's difficult for businesses and for residents to have to deal with these closures or these constraints on their operations. So it will ultimately, though, behoove everybody, for as many people as possible, to comply with the order as strictly as they possibly can, because that will shorten the duration of those impacts. We do have an enforcement hierarchy that was developed, and starting with what appears to be nonessential businesses that are operating when perhaps they shouldn't be, going to essential businesses that are operating and making sure that they're engaging in safe practices, and then going down and addressing some of the other situations as time allows, like, if people are concerned about behaviors that their neighbors might be engaging in, that kind of thing. How far down that list we're going to get, I really don't know. You know, it's a, it's a relatively big city for a code enforcement staff of just a couple people to deal with, and we tried to augment the PD's capabilities with them, but they're very limited at some point as well. And I know that City Manager looked like he wanted to add something.
Yes, City Manager Lotter?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just in addition to Director Gerving's comments, the part of the impetus for the city to enforce the order is that, that's what we've been told by the sheriff's department is our job. The county has created the shelter in place order, along with that definitions, at least broad definitions of what constitutes an essential business. But we've, we've been told by the sheriff that enforcement of that order is the local jurisdiction's responsibilities to do that. So we're, we're trying to be good partners in following through with that. You can imagine, though, that there are, there's a lot of gray area here. And one of the concerns that the mayor and I have talked about extensively is how do we ensure that there is consistent enforcement of the shelter in place order, essential versus nonessential businesses countywide? So that if, if a business is open in Eureka but closed in Arcata, and there are similar type functions, that seems to create an inequity, or vice versa. And so the mayor and I have been in conversation with how do we create some consistency throughout the county? Because the, the county itself at times is hesitant to always make a decision on what distinguishes essential versus nonessential for a variety of reasons. It's a, it's a very difficult thing to do, actually. It's a very difficult role for the county to perform. So as a result, the city, cities are kind of left up to our individual judgments at times to, to render what we think is essential versus nonessential, or if a business is kind of in the gray area, are they at least practicing defensible, you know, good social distancing practices and enforcing them? And so really, what the thrust of the campaign is, is that we're focusing on education and compliance first, and, and just trying to get businesses to, to be smart and help protect themselves, as well as their employees, as well as the people they serve. So, but we've, we've been directed by the sheriff's department to do this enforcement action.
Okay. Yeah, just because I've been really proud of our city, where, where I've been, and just seeing how intentional those businesses that I've at least interacted with and seen how intentional they are about the six foot, and, you know, all of that. So I was, I was wondering if there was just something that, that had required this, because there was noncompliance or something?
Councilmember Bergel, do you have a question?
I do. So I'm curious, does this also get at, I've been getting calls about the park. And primarily, what I get are, there are eight kids, teenagers down at Hammond Park playing basketball. It's a great thing, just, I don't know that all eight are brothers and sisters, or cousins, or live in the same house. So on the one hand, yeah, it's great that they're out there doing all this stuff, and on the other hand, this whole social distancing thing. And I know one person did a report, they called me, but they also reported to, to someone about going and having them looked at. And I've had reports of, also at the playground at Ross Park, but I do walk by there a lot to make sure that people are safe. I'm curious, so if you see a group of, you know, six, eight teenagers together, what's the best practice? I mean, teenagers, right? But I think they need to be aware, and I'm getting calls, and I generally go out and talk to people, but not currently, so needing a place to send calls to.
That is something that would be covered in the ordinance, because in the order, that type of behavior, if they're not in the same household, isn't something they should be engaging in. So it is something that I mentioned before, is a little bit further down the priority list, but as time allows, or if people are out and about and they see that kind of behavior happening, checking and seeing what the circumstances are would absolutely be great. Because if all of those people, all the kids that are out there are in the same household, it's no big deal. But if they aren't, then sports like basketball, where you're, you know, in contact with other and handling the same ball, those are, are really, you know, a potentially problematic situation for transmission.
So I'm just curious, and this is just a sidebar, if there isn't a way we can, in one of our PSAs, address this? I think I've had people ask me, what does it mean that kids aren't supposed to be out by themselves? And I just think that it might be a great thing to be able to address just one more time, in a specific way, why this is important. And then I too wanted to say that I really appreciate any business that I've gone, I've been staying home most of the time, the compliance and the intentional way that the businesses behave is really, it's good. You live in an awesome community. That's, that was a comment.
All right, I should have stopped you. Councilmember Castellano, do you have any questions?
Yes, let's see, just a couple. Some have already been answered in terms of how our essential business is determined by whom, but kind of related to that, it sounds like there's been some work going through the zoning code. Will that information then be accessible online for, for people to search and see if their, their business is, what category it falls into? Or should they just send an email? Is that a better route?
I think sending an email is a better route, or calling the 441444 number, which is kind of our central information line. And the reason for that is that there are differences with every business. As I said before, there are many businesses that we would think, just based on their description, fit the definition of essential. But when you look a little bit deeper into exactly what they're providing, or to whom they're providing those functions, then they can absolutely justifiably be put in the essential category. One, one example might be a furniture store. And why would furniture be essential? Well, if the furniture store also sells appliances like washers and dryers and cooking equipment, then that, that is more easily justified. So that's one example.
And then, let's see, a follow-up question to that, is there, let's say, a business is deemed nonessential, but they swear that they're essential? What, can you describe the path they might take to address that, or to, you know, what might happen at that point?
In situations like that, we would, that's where I would ask people to send an email to the COVID-19 email list, and then that would give the opportunity for Chief Watson and I to confer about that and confer with the city manager and make a determination. You know, I, I hope that there isn't, but I'm sure there will be a time when we just disagree with someone out there in the public. And that's the point at which we have to really stress to them the importance of complying with the order.
Sure. And then this, some folks kind of just asked me about this casually. What about, how is the city offering information about protection for employees that work for essential businesses, such as people who work at grocery stores, for instance, that now are being more exposed to, to, you know, contact? Does the city play any role in offering guidelines for that, or is that through the county website?
Well, one, one thing is that we are also in the process of developing a form that will be completed and signed by essential businesses that are operating, outlining some of the practices that they need to make sure they're using to keep their employees and their customers safe. So that's the first part. The second part is that one of the flyers that we've developed also has a link to the Cal OSHA website with a lot of information about what businesses can do to protect their employees, specific to COVID-19. The reason why I'm providing that information directly is because it's about 35 pages of information, but it is a resource for employers or owners.
Great, thank you. And then one last question. Personally, I'm bringing this up because council has received a lot of comments specifically about people who are houseless. And I was, and so, and I know that's not specifically on our agenda, so we're not going to address that specifically, but I was curious in terms of some of the citations, in terms of, you know, if someone is not able to shelter in a, in a house, for instance, how, how are citations around someone who doesn't have a house being addressed? how, how are citations around someone who doesn't have a house being addressed?
That's not the type of activity that I anticipate our code enforcement staff involved in. I know that there's a lot of work being done by EPD and community services, working with non-governmental partners in the community, and they're doing a really good job of helping the homeless community weather this, this challenge. But I don't anticipate that our code enforcement staff would get involved from an informed standpoint with the housing population.
Great, thank you.
All right, so everybody asked questions. And city clerk Powell, do we have any letters on this? Or did we have a public comment?
We did receive three letters regarding item A two. And I have them here available, and all of the council members did receive them. And I will be making them part of the public record.
Okay, so that I will bring it back and we will go into comments. So councilmember Castellano, do we have any comments about this item?
No comments specifically, thank you.
Councilmember Bergell?
No comments, thank you.
Councilmember Messner?
I, I just want to make sure that we continue to support both the health and the livelihood of our community, which would, would make sure that we are making sure that people are complying. But also, we, we want to be careful not to shut down services that really are necessary or needed. And looking at the bigger picture, I have some concerns with this. I just want to make sure that we're not creating something that, that will end up being in conflict with the county and the state and some of that. And then we'll be in this fight. I, I, I just have some concerns about that. As, I mean, I think everyone received at least one email regarding one business that has already been asked to, to shut down. And that particular business has been extremely compliant with how they follow the safety measures. They've been actually pretty intensely following those, and I've observed that myself. So those are the kind of things that I'm a little concerned about, especially because county, what they've described as what is essential. They fit into that. So those are the kind of concerns that I personally have about, about this. And I don't know exactly how to remedy that, but I do think we need to consider that.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Yeah, my comments are that I'd really like to ensure that we're focusing as much energy as possible on education. And I don't think that our staff or our council wants to be in the position of deciding the merits of people's proposal that they are, aren't essential businesses. And I, you know, if it's not clear, then my inclination would be to say that if they can make a case for it and they're taking, taking countermeasures to ensure that they're operating as safely as possible, then I would, you know, I don't think it's worth, I don't think it's worth the fight. And, and, but I, I'm concerned that this might, might prove challenging. And that it could also potentially be a tool to, I mean, this would be more of a concern if I didn't have the utmost trust in our staff's judgment. But it could be a tool that would be aimed a little unfairly at people who are less in a position to, to deal with the current crisis, whatever that might look like. Whether they, you know, work for a business that is maybe kind of sort of on the cusp of essential, but they desperately need the work, or, or they're houseless, or, you know, whatever else the case may be. I think, you know, potentially there could be problems with it. But I, I trust that our staff will use good judgment. And ultimately, that the process for people being able to say, hey, wait a minute, here's the rationale for why I am essential. Or here's why a business fits with the state guidelines or the county's guidelines, then, you know, I think we'll, we'll learn as we go. So I'm willing to proceed with it, but, you know, we're in uncharted waters. And, you know, anything that allows additional enforcement where it wasn't previously something enforceable is a little fraught with concern. But that said, I think we're moving in the right direction. So I think we'll see how it plays out. I'm glad there's a mechanism for people to let the staff know what, what they are doing to, to apply countermeasures and to deal with the situation. And that there's a way for them to show their, their relevance and essential role in the community.
Councilmember Allison?
Yeah, I guess my comment would be that I think the more we continue to take this seriously, even though it is devastating for some businesses and people not being able to work, the sooner this might be over with. Flattening the curve so that we don't have a surge of cases will hopefully allow us to return back to a normal society someday soon. So I think because we're all taking this seriously, this is a very good step in the right direction. And we can hopefully just be back to normal one day soon. So just hang in it, hang in there, everyone who's, you know, for businesses, to homeowners, to renters. We're all, we're all in this together.
Madam Mayor, could I add one thing?
Sure.
I just wanted to clarify for the council and for the public that the item on the agenda tonight, or this afternoon, isn't about the overall idea of enforcement of the county's order or of the state's order. Police Department already has the ability to enforce that under the Health and Safety Code. And our staff already has the ability to educate people about that. The only thing that this urgency ordinance does is, is it adds the authority for our code enforcement officers in the event that it's necessary. We hope that it's not, because we hope that education is the path with most businesses. But in the event that it's necessary, it gives our enforcement officers misdemeanor citation authority only for the county and state health officer's orders. So to clarify that, what the ordinance actually does. But that if PD had unlimited capacity, they could already be out doing the same kind of thing if necessary.
So, and I just wanted to add that I have been working on this on the OES Task for Economic Development. And I am trying to get together with other jurisdictions and gather information to see if we can at least all be on the same page and from city to city. So there's a consistent message. I think that will help us as we move forward as well. And a little bit more than the case-by-case basis, but we have some very good, we have people who have a very good sense of why they're important to the community. And that's a valuable thing to know when you own a business. And I guess I just, I just wanted to add that it's, it's very tough. And it's, it feels really threatening to think that you have to close down. But I have a feeling that based on things that are happening other where, other places in the country, we're, or we're going to have clearer direction, I believe, as we move on and people learn more. So I hope that instead of you having to figure out more, and we do start to get clear direction from the state and from the county as they learn and how to find things better. So that is my comment. And with that, Zeynep, have another, anything else to say before we take a vote?
Need to have a motion.
Oh, that's right. I'm so sorry. It's such a curious thing we are. Would somebody like to make the motion? Councilmember Arroyo? Arroyo, or Count, or Natalie? Okay.
I heard you. I was just pulling out, pulling up the right portion. And all right, I move that we adopt bill number nine seven nine tax CS, an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Eureka, requiring all persons within the City of Eureka to adhere to state and county public health orders, providing for enforcement and declaring emergency thereof.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any more discussion on this?
I, Leslie, I have, sorry. I just want to say that I, I support councilmember Messner and Arroyo's statements about really wanting to support businesses. And, you know, and I do value people who, if they are providing good, safe ways of conducting businesses that are essential or could be deemed essential. That, you know, I think we really want to like laud and lift up those people too. So just to add that.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I would. Yeah, yeah, I agree. I just think that we need to be really working with those who are complying. Because like I said, I'm just, I've been really proud of the businesses in our community. I have been to seen that non-compliance from some of the other communities in our area. But I've really been proud of the businesses in our area. And so while, while, while we have these measures in place, I think some of the more difficult challenges are what councilmember Bergell mentioned, which is more of those public spaces. Those are some of the things that I've, you know, that really are more essential, because it seems like the businesses have been doing that pretty well. So just wanting to make sure we're covering all of those things and really looking well at how we manage this. You know, with, we, we really want to support our community, their health, as well as, as well as making sure that people are really compliant. That's really the biggest thing. We really want people to understand what that looks like and the measures are in place. So even at the bank, you know, at these different businesses, there's been tape six feet apart. Like I've just been seeing this around the community. So I, I really appreciate, I just want to say again, how much I appreciate the businesses and how they are doing that. And better education around the parks and some of that would be where I'd like to focus more attention. So.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? All right, let's take a vote. City clerk Powell?
Yes, councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Messner?
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Allison?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergell?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
And then the next item on our agenda is, the last item is A three eviction moratorium. And economic development planner Swan Asbury will provide the report on this one.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
So today I'm bringing before you an ordinance to haul evictions, rent increases, and water shut-offs during the COVID-19 emergency. This ordinance was prompted by an executive order that was issued by Governor Newsom on March sixteenth that authorized local jurisdictions to haul evictions for renters affected by COVID. Right now, a lot of Californians are experiencing substantial loss of income due to the shelter in place orders. And it's affecting their ability to keep up with their rent and utility bills. Further income impacts are anticipated, which leaves a lot of tenants vulnerable to eviction. And considering this is a public health emergency, the consequences of eviction are especially severe, including the potential for homelessness and for families to move into overcrowded conditions, which in turn can spread the virus. So if adopted, this ordinance would take effect immediately and would remain in effect through May thirty-first. We modeled this timeline after the governor's executive order, but council could choose to extend the effective period if necessary. So how is this going to work? Basically, if a tenant's income is affected by COVID, the tenant can notify their landlord while providing documentation and delay their rent payments until May thirty-first. However, the tenant is still responsible for the payments, but will have six months to pay back the delayed amount. We're proposing five different circumstances for tenant to qualify for delayed payments. The first one, if a tenant lost household income as a result of being sick with coronavirus or caring for a household or family member who is sick with coronavirus. If a tenant lost household income as a result of a layoff, loss of hours, loss of business, or other income reduction resulting from coronavirus or the state of the emergency. The third circumstance is if a tenant lost household income due to compliance with the recommendation from a government agency to stay home, self-quarantine, or avoid congregating with others during the state of emergency. The fourth is a tenant lost household income as a result of caring for minor children affected by school, preschool, and/or childcare closures. Or the fifth circumstance is if a tenant lost household income as a result of the discontinuance or reduction of a government aid program. So the tenant would then have a hundred and eighty days, six months, to repay the delayed payments from the expiration of this ordinance. And landlords and tenants may mutually work out a payment schedule or arrangements for repayment of the delayed payments. There's a couple of things I want to point out to council about our ordinance. We defined the two reasons a landlord could not evict someone, non-payment of rent or no-fault eviction. And this language is important, because if there's criminal activity, we would allow landlords to move forward with an eviction. Excuse me, not COVID. Second, when writing this ordinance, we started with a limit to residential renters. But then we chose to remove the word residential and just use the term renters, making it broader. So that means that this ordinance would also apply to commercial renters. So when adopting, I need direction on if you would like to keep it as it is with the broad term of renters, or if you would like to limit it and add the word residential. And lastly, this ordinance suspends the discontinuation or shut-off of water service for residents and businesses in the city for non-payment of water and sewer bills, imposition of late payment penalties or fees for delinquent water and more sewer bills, and increases in rent. So that's the end of what I have for you, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And I think Bob will be helpful to answer questions as well.
Okay, well, this time I guess I will start with councilmember Allison.
Hi, yes, I have a question about, say, say there's a landlord or property owner who has a mortgage on their property that is relying on a renter to help pay. I'm aware there's, like Fannie Mae just rolled out a program to defer payments for up to a year. And I encourage those who have mortgages through them to apply. But are we aware of any other programs that could help out some property owners at this time, as well as the renters? Just so that, you know, everyone, it's equitable for everyone, so to say?
You know, a number of banks have come forward with options. And some are giving extensions for ninety days. But you're right, this does pass the burden on to the property owners. And so I think that's why council needs to be cautious about this. And just keep in mind the property owners, as well as the business owners and the residents.
Yeah, and my other question would be following up. So the renters would have six months from the time this, this stay, stay-at-home order is, is done away with to make their missing payments to the land, landowners, owners. Could you, could you maybe explain that for renters? Would this be on like a personal written basis with their, with their property owner? Or would it be more defined by the city, just so we could give better instruction for those who may need to apply for this?
Sure, so it would be between the tenant and the property owner to make payment arrangements. So it'd be between them how that repayment would happen over the six months.
Okay, and so also the city is, is going to allow deferred payments on water and sewer. Am I correct that PG&E is doing something similar right now too?
I don't know the answer to that. Does anybody else?
I believe that they are. I saw some communication, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I saw some communication come- of the council, I saw some communication come out where PG&E announced that they're going to work with their utility customers. And I think they're possibly engaging in a no-shut-off policy, just like we are with regards to our water utilities.
I just want to cover all the bases that we can all just survive right now and get through this.
All right. Y'all done with questions? Now, Councilmember Arroyo.
I know that some of the communications we've received from the public have been around whether we had the option to provide some form of remedy for people who believe that they won't be able to make their payments even after that six-month period. And requested that the city enact stoppage of rent payments. I don't believe that's within our power to do, but I wanted to check and see, you know, what, what options might be available for folks who are in that position. I know we kind of covered it already, but essentially, what would we advise for folks who may find themselves in that position?
So I think that you have it, you've stated it accurately, is I don't think we have the power to eliminate rent payments. If that's, if that's the question, you're talking about people who can probably not come back from the COVID shutdown, so to speak, and not make payment within that six-month period?
Yeah, that, that was the, the concern that was posed in some communications that I believe we all received, but I certainly know I received that communication by email.
Yeah. So I think the problem with that is it would be a taking of property without due process. And so that, in that sense, we certainly couldn't do it by ordinance, and we probably can't do it through eminent domain either, because it may be that there's not a sufficient public purpose to giving individual rent relief. So I think we're, I think that's not a legally feasible option.
Thank you. And then one additional follow-up item. You know what? I lost it. I'm sorry. We're all dealing with this without our notes and our normal binders and everything, and I'll, I'll make a note of it and bring it back up.
Yeah, I'll call you again to make sure that you got it, if you remember it. Councilmember Messner?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Governor Newsom's order is, is the purpose of our creating this to provide further clarity around this? Because, yeah, like, it seems there's a few differences. So is that the purpose is for us to have a little bit more ability to manage within our city what we're going to do? What's the reason for the extra ordinance if it's already there for the county, for the whole state?
So the governor's order gives jurisdictions the option to do this, but it doesn't actually do it. So that's why we need to do this, is to actually put the eviction moratorium in place.
Got it. Okay. And then second, the, how are we providing property owners outside of the area with the information to ensure they're aware of this ordinance? Because we do, I do, I know that that is something that happens here in this area. We have quite a few people who, who provide rentals, but they do not live in the area. So I just wanted to see how we're going to manage that side of it.
We started by putting out a press release on Friday, and I'm open to suggestions. I'm sorry that I don't have a concrete answer for how to handle that.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's just something we might want to think through, because that is something that, that it does happen. And we wouldn't want to see us put this into place and then renters, you know, say they're, have their landowners kick them out, so, or evict them. And then the other one is, you asked the question about the language of the renters.
Heidi, it looked like Dean had something to say about the last.
Oh, okay.
Question. So I just wanted to get that before you're good enough.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. To Councilmember Messner's point, I think for certain what we can do is, we've been talking about communication and our communications plan going forward. And if it's okay, I'll update maybe at the end of the meeting a little bit about that, and then talk about an opportunity under a Brown Act amendment, which could allow us to do more informational meetings via televideoconferencing. But I think whether we're able to communicate with any out-of-town landlords, at least we can make sure that the people who are living within the community are advised of their rights to the fullest extent possible by getting that information out through every medium possible. And at least we're, we're getting the ball into one side of that court, whether it's the renter or the, the property owner. So at least they're able to discuss that, should that kind of dialogue start occurring between a landlord and a renter.
Okay. One, one thought might be being able to have something that they could also send with their request to their landlord, that we actually have like the language of maybe providing this for people to print or something, you know, just so that people have the language. I think that might be helpful. Does that make sense? You look like you're confused. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. The last thing I was wondering about, or wanted to say is, it's on and asked about the language of renters, and whether it's to leave that language or create just, what was the word you used?
Have it be for renters, all renters?
Yeah.
Or to just have it be for residential renters?
Yeah. And I, I was just thinking about the, the businesses and how many businesses may be in the exact same position as residential renters. So, yeah, that, that, I see why you would ask that question. I think that's important to think through. So, yeah. Thank you.
Everybody switched around for some reason, but Councilmember Bergel, you're next. Any questions?
Yes.
So I'm curious. First, I want to say that you support the residential and the businesses as far as renters being supported. I think that's going to be really important. But I'm curious if we're going to be looking at cosigners as being considerations for responsible parties on these businesses, not businesses, but on these rents. So if a person has a cosigner, and they're not paying their rent in this particular, are we going to, or not, I guess it wouldn't be us, but would that be the consideration, the cosigner, to get the money? Anyone? Swan?
That might be something I need Attorney Black's help with answering.
Sure. So I think I need to more fully understand the question. Would we, is this something that we would include in the ordinance, perhaps?
Well, I'm curious, for these landlords who are going to be, you know, ones that need to be paying their mortgages, that don't have that opportunity, and maybe this is just something to put out there, is, I'm just curious if that might be something that people become aware of, is that are going to be speaking with cleaners about helping to mitigate that problem?
Talking about existing cosigners that are already on these leases?
Yes.
That's a very big question. And I say that because I think that the cosigners would be the people to bring forward payment of the rent kind of as a last resort. Certainly in the landlord's eyes, the rights that are given tenants, per se, may not necessarily be claimed by cosigners. And so that would make, would put pressure on the cosigners if they're already on existing leases. And so I think that consideration that we really didn't develop, we, we probably could, should also consider the situation where the tenant proposes that they're going to pay the rent within the six months, the avoided rent, but then they're not going to make that payment until the last day of the six months. And it almost seems like if the landlord and tenant are not able to agree, there should be a fault payment schedule. That's perhaps a little less harsh to the landlord, who's probably going to go through the six-month period, feeling like, you know, they may never get paid. And their, their eviction right won't really rise until the end of a six-month period.
Okay.
So I'm, I guess what I'm suggesting is, maybe some things, there are things to think about, and we could come back with like a cleanup bill, if you will, just to address, a common term in the legislature, just to address these, maybe some unanswered questions.
Okay. And then secondly, so if an eviction is in process already, so say that the eviction was put in process in January before this whole thing came forward, that eviction doesn't have protection, right? Or do they? Will that eviction continue to move forward, is what I'm asking, or will it stop?
I think it depends. First of all, it definitely depends on the nature of the eviction, because if it's a so-called at-fault eviction, it's not based on no-fault concessions, like the property's been foreclosed and the new, the bank, you know, initiated the eviction. Or it's not based on non-payment of rent. I think it definitely would move forward. So it'd be subject to the same exceptions in this ordinance. And I also think the question of non-payment, if it is based on non-payment, did the non-payment occur before the COVID state of emergency existed? And I think if that's the case, then the non-payment hasn't been caused by the, the COVID emergency. And therefore, I think that could also move forward. So I think there are a variety of circumstances, and you'd almost have to look case by case.
And then I, did you have your hand up to add something? Or were you just moving it? Sorry. Nope. Go ahead.
We're not sure who you're talking to.
I'm sorry.
I see. Yeah.
And so the other thing is that I just want to make that this is not, this is not a blanket statement that everyone is going to be forgiven or given time out for rents, that there is a criteria of relief that needs to be followed. If you don't have that criteria for relief, then you are required or responsible to pay your rent or your mortgage, or those, is that correct?
Yeah, I think Swan had recited those pretty well. So.
All right. I think I have one more, but I have to look around. So you'll have to come back. Okay. So I see Natalie is raising her hand, but Leslie has, or Councilmember Castellano hasn't had a chance to ask yet. So can you make a note? And we'll get to you after Councilmember Castellano. Okay.
Um, let's see, just a couple of questions. One is late fees, whether tenants or whether landlords can enact late fees due to deferred rent, or whether this also implies that late fee, that there will not be late fees enacted?
So we don't include anything about late fees, but we can, if you'd like to?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, it's not comments, but I would say it's, I would like to see late, no late fees for, for the time period, you know? And, yeah. And then another question is just in terms of landlords and tenants making arrangements. It's, it might, I'm wondering if anyone thinks it would be useful to put the words in writing in there, because I feel like there could be a lot of lack of clarity between maybe tenants and landlords thinking different things about what the payment arrangements are going to be.
I think that's another very good idea.
I could comment on that. Natalie has a question, and then we'll do comments later.
But that's fine. But I can wait. I can come back.
Do you have a question, Natalie? Councilmember Castellano?
Yes. One last question. Would it be possible to, to include at some point a resource, or to create a resource for landlords about banks that are offering deferred mortgages? I feel like that's going to be the, the, what, what banks do. I mean, it seems like that's the trend, but I would like to offer some resources for landlords, you know, along with this, so that they don't feel like they're, it's now experiencing a separate crisis due, due to these protections.
Okay. There was a nod. Swan? And, okay, any other questions, Councilmember? All right. So Councilmember Arroyo, you had another question?
Thank you. So we are talking about something that I think there's, I have a substantial concern about, because Governor Newsom already issued a statewide moratorium on evictions. It was on March 27th. So the initial statement that local governments could have their own eviction moratoriums was from March 16th. But on March 27th, there was a new executive order that's on the governor's website, the state's website, about banning enforcement of eviction orders for renters. And it's, I guess my question is, should we be referencing that in our moratorium? And again, because this came out Friday, and now here we are on Monday, I don't think staff have had enough time to really incorporate it. But, you know, should we be referencing that? And then also, should we, there's a few differences between the two. The governor's executive order, excuse me, pertains only to residences, and ours is, is written more broad. And then the, the governors has some additional provisions for how one would provide proof of impact. So should we also be looking to include those? And I think those are my questions. That's it. Okay. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, Swan? Or Mayor Seaman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just listening to you. City Attorney Black.
Thank you. So I have not analyzed exactly the questions that Natalie raised, but we did receive a letter from Legal Services of Northern California late this afternoon. I don't know how many of you have had a chance to absorb it, but I'm going to, I'm going to basically quote their position, because Julie, their work in this area has been very good. And this is what they say about the governor's March 27 order. More recently, Executive Order N3720 dated March 27, 2020 puts in place some substantive protections, but only for a subset of the many tenants who will be affected by the crisis, and only with procedural burdens on tenants that are both confusing and difficult to meet. Under the governor's new order, a tenant who has lost income due to COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic, can still be evicted for non-payment of rent, even when the tenant is able to pay back the rent within a reasonable time. As our comments detail, we implore the council to adopt the proposed eviction urgency ordinance to protect all tenants in Eureka, and to provide a workable process that is reasonable and fair for both tenants and landlords in the community. So we can, we can take a look at the governor's order, we can take a look at their position, legal services position, and report back to you at the next opportunity. It does appear to me that there are some details that you, as council members, are mentioning and seem concerned about that may indicate That may indicate we should return to you with a, like I said, a supplemental ordinance. But there's still reason, I believe, to put this ordinance, the ordinance before you in effect tonight or this afternoon.
So I will, we have a meeting next week as well.
Yes, yeah.
Have two week wait, if we do have to take it back.
Right.
And we've asked all of our questions. I know we had quite a lot of letters, City Clerk Powell. Oh, you had a question too?
Well, I just wanted to, Councilmember Castellano was talking about, you know, having these things in writing. Having the landlord-tenant agreements in writing. I was reading about Arcade and what they've done is they have the tenant. Make a copy of the letter that they send to the landlord and they send one to the landlord and they send one to the city manager. So that they had on file, so that in six months or whenever that might occur, there's proof on both sides. The date stamp may be different, but the, the nice thing about that is, is that you can prove either way. It protects both parts. So that's just a consideration.
City Clerk, we got several letters. You want to tell us how many and if there are any we haven't seen yet?
All of them have been forwarded to you and we received 11 responses or comments. And that does include the legal services that City Attorney Black referenced. So those all came in, a lot of them this afternoon, but we have an 11 total.
And they will all be attached and everybody got a chance to see those, right?
And I just want to say for the minutes, I will be listing the names of everyone who provided a public comment like I would normally do. And then I will have the letters, the actual comments themselves available separately.
Thank you very much. So now that we have done that, I will bring it back to comments. I'm sure there's a lot, it's a lot to wrap our minds around on this one. We will go ahead and start with Councilmember Bergel.
Okay, so I have a concern. About this, just. I like the idea that there's criteria. I am concerned about the landlords as well, though. You know, sometimes when you're not for your mortgage payment or you're using that to support yourself, that's really challenging, especially six months. Can be a really long time. So, you know, I like that we're, that we're moving forward. I'm wondering if the 100 days, if that isn't too of a pay period. If we should maybe, you know, make that smaller than 90, just an idea. Conversation this evening with this. This particular discussion, we have not discussed anything about our homeless people and what we are going to do to support them. And so I have serious concerns about that. I know that people are working very hard to move forward. But to shelter in place when you don't have a place. And I think more actions to be taken in this regard because that's, that's our most vulnerable. Most vulnerable populations and they're out in the city all the time. You know, touching doorknobs, touching other kinds of things. Need to figure out a way to educate them. As well as to find ways to support them. And I think our city is doing a fabulous job of reaching out. But I think that we can always do more as far as finding places for people. So I just wanted to put that out there. And I appreciate everybody that's working so hard to shelter in place and to social distance and to wash all the time and to sanitize. It's hard, especially if you're active at all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Messner.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm, there are concerns I have for. Those who do depend on that income, but I think everyone's in that same place. You know, that's the challenge is that everyone is in the same place of struggling with that income gap. And what that looks like. I'm a little concerned with, for sure, I think that it needs to be broader than just residential because of that issue. And in regard to what Councilmember Bergel just said. They, this, there's a couple of really important documentation that the state of California did for homeless. And like even a layout of how to do that. I think we do need to work on that and including some of that into. Into this issue. So. It would be really helpful to do that. I am in agreement with her that we need to do something and be intentional about that. So I'd like, I, I wasn't sure where we were going to put that or how we were going to put that, but. I also. Think that we are in that place where we need to put something, especially because of government, Governor Newsom's. Order that we need to do something to, for renters. And to go ahead and put something out there, I would like to see some of those things like. The, the late fees included if we're going to do something like this, because I think that's a really important piece. So I agree with. Councilmember Castellano that. I think that's it right now. Oh, I like how Councilmember Bergel talked about what Arcade is doing. I think that would be really helpful to have as a part of this, sending two letters and just having a little bit of verification. Because otherwise, there really isn't any. Any backup, you know, for, for people. And we don't know if, they just decided, oh, now I lost my job this month. And so now I hope that that's gonna take care of the last couple of months that I wasn't paying my rent. You know, we just, we just want to make sure that we're, we're creating that backup, that kind of verification. So I think that that is a good idea as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Royo. Any comments?
So my primary comment is that the. If we were to take more time to fine tune things like a repayment schedule. Or how this applies. I guess the damage could be to commercial renters, but the governor's order already is in place. For residential renters. And we are not going to. That protects residential renters right now, although our ordinance, as legal services pointed out. Is more robust in some ways, but in some ways, the governor's is more robust. As far as, I, I think some provisions that potentially protect landlords. So, or create more definition for landlords. Like it includes that prior to the date of this order, the tenant had to have paid rent pursuant to an agreement. I didn't see that in ours, but they have to have some form of agreement where they're already paying rent to be considered a tenant, for example. Or that they need to have verifiable documentation explaining their changed financial circumstances. Now, I don't know that we want to apply those, but those are potential verification measures to ensure that someone is in fact. A tenant with an existing tenancy agreement or that they were in fact impacted. You know, I don't know who would really abuse that in these times, but I just wanted to point out that those are in there. And I don't think we can have fewer provisions than the state dictates. We can have more potentially, but not fewer. And when Arcade did theirs, this was pre-governor's. Excuse me, what's this called? Executive order. So they were in a different position than we are now, where we now do have this executive order. And so my hope would be that, you know, perhaps we. You know, if, if there's benefit to passing this today, because it has additional protections that we want to have, then that's, that's great. But I also, you know, since there's language in the state's requirements now. That, you know, I'd want to make sure they're, they're synced up or that we're not duplicating or creating. Different provisions when we don't need to. So it's not a huge concern of mine, because after just kind of looking at the two side by side, it really looks like they're. Ours is just covers potentially commercial businesses or as, as written, covers commercial businesses. And is less restrictive as far as documenting financial losses or a tenancy agreement. So. Just a few thoughts, but even if we were to go, wait, we need more detail to figure out how this would work. People would still be protected from eviction as residential renters right now. And as of March 27th, they, they had that protection. So I, I think it's worthy of some discussion around what we want to do. Whether we want to have some kind of schedule in place, whether we want to have some kind of guidance for people. Or whether that can be issued separately or later. I think a lot of the comments that we received from folks were based on an initial reading. Thinking that we were in a position to enact this moratorium. But not necessarily realizing that the governor has, since this was initially written, has enacted that. So some of the concerns from folks saying, hey, wait a minute, you're taking away my income as a landlord are. Those are certainly still concerns for them, but those are now moot as far as how, how the state is handling it. So. So I'm interested to hear what you think about additional provisions that we might want to have in here, whether we'd want to bring those back at a different time.
Thank you, Councilman Royo and Councilman Castellano.
Let's see, a few comments. Let's see, well, first, possibly a question for you, Mayor Seaman. I know you've been in a lot of conversations around economic, the economic impact here. Has, has that group developed any list of banks? Or, or mortgage companies that are changing their plans or making different kinds of arrangements?
You know, I just, I have been working on the financial resources for businesses. But realized earlier today that that's a different group of bankers I need to talk to. But I'm going to start adding that to my list of information that we're getting. And once we get it, I'll have them put it on the SBDC website. But I know people are out there talking about it. It's just a different set of bankers. I just need to call.
Thank you. This, I mean, and that's great to hear. So I appreciate that. Let's see, in terms of, I agree wholeheartedly in including commercial renters. And for that reason, I think it would be great to move forward with a. First draft tonight, this afternoon, partially because I, you know, as, as someone who rents a commercial space. In Old Town myself, I know that there are a lot of small business owners right now that are certainly really. Concerned about making plans for the future for their business. And I think knowing that there, you know, they will be included in this, I think will be a huge relief for them. And I for sure see the logic in waiting a week if that just is way easier in terms of staff time. Or, you know, or how it would work to then repeal and adopt another ordinance or whatnot. I, I did read the legal services letter and agreed with that in terms of appreciating that it offered more. Kind of broader and specific supports for renters. And, let's see, it seems like people are agreeing about the in writing. I, I guess I had a question when Councilmember Arroyo, or I was uncertain, I felt uncertain in hearing Councilmember Arroyo. Talk about the, they must have an existing tenancy agreement. Because I, I guess I would still want to protect people who are in a word of mouth arrangement. But, but that they then needed to put an agreement in writing regarding this in terms, you know, in order to receive protections. I, I think would be useful, you know, in how we might tie into that, into the governor's ordinance there. And then as far as our. Population who is houseless, for sure, I think we've all received lots of comments regarding that. And it, and it's not specifically within this moratorium, but I would like to see something. Brought forward on the April 7th meeting, that's maybe more specific to the needs of people who are houseless. Whether it's a combination of a staff report of what is currently happening. Because it seems like there's a lot of, just a lack of information, but also. A, a potential for a, a plan for, for what we're doing. And how we are meeting people's needs and how we could go forward from here. That might include some emergency services and things like that.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Castellano. Councilmember Allison.
Hey, just full disclosure, I have to go to work soon, so I'd love to try and wrap this up. Have to work till 6:30 in the morning. Anywho, I'm in favor of this. I'd love to pass the motion, but I don't have the language in front of me because I'm using my iPad. But I, I think a six-month payback period is more than fair for both parties, property owner and renter alike. I fully recognize that many Americans, including Americans in Eureka, live paycheck to paycheck on a limited income. And so we all have to do our part. I think the city's doing our part by enacting this, this ordinance. But also we have to look to our other governmental partners, such as the federal government, for, you know, keep applying for assistance. To help everyone get through this, because we're, we're all in a pickle here and nothing's going to be perfect. But we can at least try and make this fair. And so at least for now, I encourage those property owners who might be in trouble. You know, a few months down the road to talk to their lenders and see what programs might be available, because I'm sure they're not the only ones. And hopefully more support continues to roll out from the other governmental agencies. With that said, I'd love to make a motion, but like I said, I don't have the language in front of me right now.
Is there anybody who has the language who would like to make a motion for this or some, or postponing it? Councilmember Messner.
You're muted. Just unmuted it. So I would, I would personally like to include a couple of the things that have been mentioned. So if that's okay, I'll make the motion to waive, let me pull it up here. To. Adopt Bill Number 979-C dash CS. An urgency ordinance of the city council, or City Council of the City of Eureka. Requiring all persons within the City of Eureka to adhere to state and county public. Oh, wait, am I on the wrong one? I'm on the wrong one. Sorry, I'm going to redo it. I'm looking on my tiny little phone trying to read this. And, okay, sorry. So I will go ahead and waive reading, read by title only and adopt Bill Number 978-C. S, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Eureka to prohibit evictions during the coronavirus state of emergency. Really quick, could we put COVID-19 instead of coronavirus because there are a lot of coronaviruses? I'm a little concerned about that. For non-payment of rent or for no-fault reasons. With the inclusion of the. No late fees during that time. I think that would be really important that we put that in. And then also. Some kind of the documentation, receiving document, the city receiving documentation as well, so that there's verification. Those are the things I'd like to see be put in.
Second, I'd love to make a friendly, or propose a friendly amendment. That we also just modify the ordinance as written to include that the governor, another whereas about the governor on March 27th. Doing this other executive order.
Yes, I would agree to that.
Well, I was just going to ask if the, the governor's order supersedes our order, I believe. And I, I guess I wanted to ask for clarification for, from City Attorney Black about whether the provisions in the governor order, governor's order. That exceed ours sort of supersede what we have written.
Yeah, so I think to the extent that.
Yeah. So I think to the extent that the governor, governor's order is clear and it protects certain individuals under certain conditions, I don't think there's any way that we can reduce the effect of that order. I think we can expand upon the effect of that order to include different people and possibly different requirements such as the requirement, you know, as to the written notice or the copies of a written agreement going to the city manager, et cetera. I think there's no problem with us including that. I would like to make a suggestion, though. I understand and agree with the COVID-19 and substitution for the coronavirus. I think that it's quite reasonable to include the whereas clause that you've just mentioned. The other two things relative to late fees. And oh, what was the other one? I'm sorry, Heidi.
The written agreement.
Just the documentation, which you already mentioned. So it was really just the no late fees.
So those are fairly substantive amendments. And really probably the public has not had enough notice of our discussion of that. I'd like to recommend that you adopt the ordinance without those and allow us to return to you with another urgency ordinance, not replacing this one necessarily, but adding a mandatory clauses to it. And I think we could have that in place for your meeting of April 7th for your consideration.
So that would be an addendum to those.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it's, it's usually called a cleanup bill.
Yeah, bill.
Yeah. And, and I think there were one or two other things too, that we might come back and suggest to tighten things up, make it clearer. Because clarity is going to be all important in the, in making this work. It's really, it's kind of a unique piece of legislation from a city point of view. So yeah, but I think if, I, I don't know the legal effect of, for example, not adopting this tonight, but putting it over till April 7th, I think you'd be deferring some of the protections and maybe leaving some people potentially exposed to an unlawful detainer lawsuit, that then it becomes more complicated for them to get rid of it. Even under the terms of an ordinance we might enact nine or 10 days from now.
So Councilmember Royal, I saw you had something else.
Just to clarify that, again, the governor's executive order does say that the tenant, we didn't talk about this earlier, but that does say that the tenant will notify the landlord in writing before the rent is due or within a reasonable period of time afterwards, not to exceed seven days. And then they'll be able to basically, under the same provisions that are in our ordinance, but slightly differently worded. And then that's when they have to provide verifiable documentation. But to, to Councilmember Castellano's point about the tenant having to be in an agreement, it just says pursuant to an agreement. It doesn't define that in this text. Maybe there's an accompanying text that I didn't see. So maybe that agreement can be verbal, but either way, I suspect that because it's in the state's ordinance that for now people could potentially utilize that. And that may, I believe that might supersede ours.
Councilmember Castellano.
May, maybe that's something that we could look into and bring forward next week if it seems pertinent.
So right now, what I'm hearing is we have a motion on this with the whereas added to it, the two points that Councilmember Messner mentioned would be discussed and brought back to us next week. I just wanted everybody to know where we were. We have more discussion. But I just wanted to check in. Okay. Anybody else have any more discussion on this? All right. Seeing then I will ask city clerk to take a vote.
Councilmember Castellano.
I.
Councilmember Messner.
Hi.
Councilmember Royal.
Hi.
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Councilmember Vergel.
Hi.
Motion, unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. Well, thanks, you guys. Those were some meaty topics in a, in an important time. So thanks for giving it some good thought and weight and we'll continue. I'm sure all of these discussions will come back in some form throughout our working on this. And I would like now to ask city manager Lotter if he has any closing thoughts. I know we were talking about potentially figuring out how we could talk more often. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of quick updates to give you towards the end here before we adjourn. The April 7th regularly scheduled council meeting is going to go forward planned. We'll just be using a format like this, but please plan on that meeting being held. I know I got an email or two, I think, from some of you wondering that question and the answer is having a meeting 7th of April. There have been amendments made to the Brown that during this declared state of emergency will allow for myself to meet with all of you via Zoom or a similar format and be able to just, I can provide you updates on all the different things that are going on during this time of emergency. And there, it's an opportunity for you to be able to ask questions and get questions answered. Decisions can be made during that time, of course, or no votes can be taken, but there can be if you will, almost like a virtual monthly memo type update. And so I'd like to start having those and may want to suggest that we look at like, say, a Wednesday at 4:00 PM as a suggested time. If that doesn't work, you know, we can certainly find a time that does work for everybody, or at least most of you, and maybe you won't always be able to attend. It would just be nice to have those, I think, on a routine basis so that I'm able to touch base with all of you. Just as a follow-up, I do try to send out updates each Friday or Saturday on the week's events. You've also received updates on CSET and what's going on with our different programs and with the homeless population. Can provide other updates on code enforcement issues and things of that nature as well. And just make sure that you're comfortable with knowing what's, what's being done as we're in kind of unique and uncertain times.
Can I ask, would, and I'm, would you be willing to start it this Wednesday? Would it be Wednesday or next Wednesday?
Um, you know, I think we could certainly have one this Wednesday if it worked with everyone's schedule. So I guess I'd look for that input from council at this time.
Okay.
And I just want to ask any kind of notification requirements that we would need to abide by.
From what I have read on the Brown Act, there is not a notification requirement. It's just, we have to adhere to the strict rules of no discussing like taking people's opinions or those, no decisions can be made. It can only be an update and questions from the council to you.
Good, thank you.
Okay. So how do we feel about city manager Lotter sending out an email? You guys can confirm if you want to start this week or next week.
That sounds good. So to clarify, are we talking about people, this being recorded and then posted for the public?
No, I think this is just a discussion and then we have other things that are being recorded. I think Councilman, or city manager Lotter.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I would like Pam to weigh in on this. She's been the one that's been staying up to date on the amendments to the Brown Act.
At this time, it, we do have the ability to record a Zoom conference. But I believe it was intended just for the city manager to provide you with an update and some of those updates may be specific to items that can't be shared publicly would be. So I would believe it would just be consultation with city manager Lotter.
Thanks for clarifying.
That works for me. This week, 4 o'clock.
Okay.
I can, I can send out an invite, Madam Mayor, if that pleases you and the council and, and those who can join us. Hopefully they will. And then we'll just hopefully set up that routine that will fit with everybody.
Thank you. Anything else to add?
The only other thing that I just wanted to mention is I did send out a, a email update this past weekend. It had a copy of our communications plan and outline. It talks about how we'll go forward with communicating with the public on sensitive matters that the, a portion of the community or the entire community may be wrestling with. The idea is that we would build a script around topics and issues and we'd get that to the mayor for her review and should have passed with her approval. We'll be, we would shoot a PSA video of her answering or speaking to a given topic, for example, on the shortlist of topics. Knowing that the eviction moratorium ordinance was coming up for your consideration. That, that makes perfect sense that we would want to shoot a PSA message on that. And then we've already launched the first PSA video and transcript. So that's on the city's website and posted on social media. And if you have the chance to also forward those on with your social media sites, council, that would be another way for us to kind of spread the word. We've created at least an initial string of static messaging around social distancing, hand washing, not touching the face. I'm going to self-report out to everybody, although I washed my hands right before the meeting. Doing a meeting like this really reminds me how so I've got a lot of growth to do in that respect, but I had totally sanitized before the meeting. Talking about the, the moratorium, talk about code enforcement and essential versus non-essential businesses, talking about continuity of services and just, you know, what is the city doing to make sure that we're protecting our staff and our first responders? And how we're moving forward to try to abide by all the shelter in place requirements as other organizations are, but yet still provide all the necessary services. There's a lot of other topics that are on that list. I don't need to run through all of them now. But if you can, take a look at that communications plan. I know there's been a request for more communication and the mayor and I are working with Eddie Alexander to respond to that. At this time, I think that's it for me, Madam Mayor. We can save more updates for Wednesday.
With that, oh, Councilmember.
Just real quick, because I know that Councilmember Vergel mentioned earlier, and I seconded that, that we in regard to our homeless population, that we would do something in regard to that. And I just don't want that forgotten or like, I just think that's really an important thing. And the, in regard to Dean Lotter's, the city manager's PSA and all of that information, there's a list of resources that have been put out for, that might be really helpful. So I mean, I can forward those to you, but those, it really helps staff, the public, just giving them links to information. So they have not just Facebook information, but reliable source information. I think that would be helpful for our, for our city to put out.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, I was going to say, everybody should go every day to our website, which is ci.eureka.ca.gov. And it has not only the PSAs, it has links to all the county resources, city resources, daily updates, ordinances, all in one place, as well as resources for businesses that can get linked out. So we're really trying to be a hub where you can come to our page and then you can get out and other places as well. And then it was something else. Oh, and this is an awkward place to do kind of reports in terms of a meeting. But we do have a lot of great CSET stuff that I hope we're going to be getting out. But it would also maybe be nice to have at the next meeting, an update about CSET during one of these meetings. And if you wouldn't mind adding that to the agenda.
You'd like that at a regular meeting or at the Wednesday update?
The regular meeting, so the, the public can hear an update.
Yeah. And I just, if I can, just add one final comment to Councilmember Messner's point. That the topic of homelessness and exactly what is the city doing? What has the city actually been doing and how did that set us up to be able to serve our homeless residents during COVID-19? We really are taking advantage, shall we say, of the network and the system that's been put into place. There are some other things that I'd like to talk with all of you at the Wednesday update with regards to, we had a meeting with the county on Friday of last week to talk about how we can enrich that partnership, that relationship and try to serve that portion of our public even better. And perhaps I can share more about that at that time.
All right. And with that, I think we can adjourn this meeting. We did it, you guys. It'll get easier and easier. See you on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.